This is a meeting of the Township Committee, June 15, 2020. Judge requirements provided for in the Open Public Means Act have been satisfied. Notice of subpoena was properly given by transition to Star Ledger, the department and the two great crimes by opposing at the Middletown Township Municipal Building and filing with the Township Court on January 9th, 2020. Committee members, hi, Bill.
Here.
Committee members, Senator Brito.
Here.
Committee woman Snell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fiori.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask you to move aside from the role of our independent office and way of life. Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have a certificate of appreciation proclamation for the record, proclaiming or advising June 6th, 2020 as Relay for Life Day at Middletown Township. Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have the approval of minutes, May 15, 2020 regular meeting, and the June 1st, 2020 workshop meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
Committee member Hyba.
Yes.
Committee member Senator Brito.
Yes.
Committee woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fiori.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt minutes. At this time, we have a resolution under our budget matters, a resolution 20-140, resolution authorizing the township of Middletown for self-admission of the budget.
Motion to approve, second.
Committee member Hyba.
Yes.
Committee member Senator Brito.
Yes.
Committee woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fiori.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt resolution 20-140. At this time, we have the public hearing for 20-138, the resolution authorizing amendment to the 2020 municipal budget. I believe we have our CFO online to read the budget. Since I don't see that Colleen is logged in, I'm just going to have to read the amendment.
Go ahead.
Who is Colleen?
Colleen's on.
She just needs to sign into the meeting. She hasn't got it yet.
So she knows that, back in, I've read the budget that they know. Okay, so for the record, I'm going to read the budget amendment. It shouldn't take more than a few minutes. The township of Middletown, on county, New Jersey, resolution to amend the budget, whereas the local municipal budget for calendar year 2020 was introduced on the 20th day of April, 2020, and whereas the public hearing on said budget was held, has been held as advertised, whereas it is desired to amend said introduced budget, now therefore be resolved by the Township Committee of the Township of Middletown, County of Monmouth, that the following amendments to the introduced budget of calendar year 2020 have to be made. Current fund anticipated revenues, general revenues surplus anticipated from 8 million to 8.5 million. The miscellaneous revenues, section A, local revenues, licenses, licenses, other licenses, $50,000, from $20,000 to $26,200. Fees and permits, $475,000 to $373,750. Fines and costs, municipal court, $675,000 to $375,000. Parking meters, from $600,000 to $294,500. Interest on investments and deposits, $850,000 to $450,000. Field user fees, from $155,000 to $75,000. Pilot senior free, senior citizen housing, $300,000 to $295,000. So that the total miscellaneous revenues in section A have gone from $3,714,000 to $2,498,450. Section C, dedicated uniform construction code, offset with appropriations, uniform construction code fees, $1,900,000 to $1.8 million. Total miscellaneous revenues in section C, total from $1,490,000 to $1.8 million. Section F, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of Director of Local Government Services, public and private revenue offset with appropriations. Sustainable New Jersey Rands, P, S, E, and G, from $0 to $2,000. Total miscellaneous revenue, section F, from $50,000 to $52,000. Section G, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of Director of Local Government Services, other than special items. Hotel occupancy tax has gone from $250,000 to $150,000. Total miscellaneous revenue, section G, $4,227,000 to $4,127,000. Total miscellaneous revenues, from $16,394,188 to $14,98638. Subtotal general revenues, from $24,419,188 to $23,505,638. Bound to be raised by taxes for support of municipal budget. A local tax for municipal purposes, including reserve for uncollected taxes, has gone from Total amounts raised by taxes for support of municipal budget, $59,000, $59,336,44. Total general revenues, from $83,452,252.44 to $83,192,252.44. Current fund appropriations, number eight, general appropriations, A, appropriations within the caps. Insurance group, insurance group benefits accumulated leave compensation, from $10,365,000 to $10,220,000. From $250,000 to $100,000. Total appropriations items, A, 8A, within caps, from $58,528,36 to $58,233,36. All appropriations including contingent with caps, from $58,528,36 to $58,253,36. Details, salaries and wages, $27,648,177, $27,498,177. Other expenses, $30,899,859 to $30,754,859. H-1, total general appropriations within caps, from $65,87,689.89 to $64,792,792,689.89. Eight, general appropriations, A, operations excluded from caps, tax appeal reserve, $150,000 to $100,000. Total other appropriations from item 8A excluded from caps, $4,308,422 to $4,258,422. Public and private programs offset by revenues, sustainable New Jersey Rands, P, S, E, and G, from $0 to $2,000. Total public and private programs offset by revenues, from $76,000 to $78,000. Total appropriations excluded from caps, $5,474,727 to $5,426,727. Detail other expenses, $1,000,000, from $1,565,305 to $1,517,305. H-2, total general appropriations excluded from caps, $16,964,562.55. L, so, total general appropriations items, H-1 and O, from $82,52,252.44 to $81,709,252.44. And reserve for uncollected taxes, from $1,400,000 to $1,400,000. Total general appropriations, $83,452,252.44 to $83,109,252.44.
Thank you, Heidi. Colleen, before we move on. If you want to unmute Heidi.
I'm here.
I'm sorry. Colleen.
Yes.
Is there anything you'd like to add to, you know, with regards to this amendment?
Well, obviously, the amendment, as you can see, most of it was, we had to reduce revenues due to the pandemic. We've done our best to forecast where we will end up with the revenues for the year. We hope that they come in as anticipated. With that, we, you know, we had to make some large adjustments. So we also went through the other side of the budget, and we tried to make adjustments as much as we could on the appropriation side as well to offset the reduced revenue that we're going to be experiencing this year.
At the beginning of this year, we had set a course that obviously looks much different than, than what it is turning out to be. And obviously, we're incredibly fortunate that we were able to swiftly make the adjustments necessary. However, despite the fact that we were able to make those adjustments quickly, I think dating back, you know, several years, five, seven years of fiscal discipline has made this possible. Not only the ability, Colleen, that you and Tony were able to work out in terms of tightening the budgets of each department throughout the municipality, but had we not built up and protected the reserves and, and had the foresight to look, you know, have that glaring view and consistent overview of our health insurance claims, of our health insurance trust, our workers' comp. Obviously, our workers' comp is, is increasing, not because of claims, but because of forecasting that we're doing in the event that we see claims in the future, new claims that previously were, you know, not allowed, you know, not authorized to be made. So I think it's, despite this pandemic, you know, I certainly feel for some of these other municipalities that may not be in a strong financial and fiscal, have the fiscal stability that we have to be able to make the, the ever slight adjustments to the budget. So tip of the cap to Colleen and to Tony. Heidi, if you want to open up for a public, for a public hearing. If any member of the public wishes to speak on the amendment to the 2020 municipal budget, Heidi will unmute your line. You'll know that your line is unmuted when you hear two beeps. That is your opportunity to make a comment. You'll hear Heidi ask if you'd like to make a comment after the two beeps. Please, if you would like to make a comment, that is your opportunity. Heidi.
Would you like to make a comment? Would you like to make a comment?
No.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a comment? 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 Would you like to make a comment?
Sure. Hey, Mayor, this is Frank Luna with JCPN.
Hey, Frank.
I'm real quick, I know I'm speaking a little.
You don't, you don't live in Middletown. How are you making a comment on this?
Well, that's what I was saying, I'm speaking a little out of turn here. I just, I was, I didn't want you guys to have to sit there in silence the whole time, but more than anything, I just wanted to drop in, say hello from JCPN, let you guys know that your local officials in town are just staunch advocates for what they need out of us. We're dealing, as everyone is, with the coronavirus pandemic and doing our best to make sure we keep the lights on, but the company wants us out and about in the community, and this is the best way to do it. So I will, real quick, just say hello and let you all know that we're in touch with your officials constantly and doing our best on a lot of different projects you have going on, but you should all be very proud of your elected officials in town. They're, they're doing a pretty good job on your behalf. So that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Frank. Keep those lights on, brother.
Absolutely. We're trying. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to make a comment?
Hi, Sergio. Good for him.
Would you like to make a comment, ma'am? Okay.
And the other.
Would you like to make a comment?
If we are calculating all these projects.
Would you like to make a comment? Would you like to make a comment? Would you like to make a comment?
Okay. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, or friend Frank Luna from JCPN, move to close public hearing and approve. Second. I'm sorry, I'm only closing public, the public hearing.
We're going to close the public hearing.
Yes. Okay. Motion to close the public hearing is a second.
Committee member Hyba.
Yes.
Committee member Senator Brito.
Yes.
Committee woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fiori.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to close the public hearing. At this time, we have the proposed vote for the 20-110, resolution authorizing the 2020 municipal budget.
Motion to approve, second.
Committee member Hyba.
Yes.
Committee member Senator Brito.
Yes.
Committee woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fiori.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve resolution 20-110.
Do we have to approve the amendment, too?
The resolution was adopted at the last meeting. Do we have the vote on it again?
Amendment, amendment resolution was passed to adopt.
Okay. Just checking.
For the adoption with the amendment.
With the amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Do it for the heck of it.
Colleen? Do you want to vote, do you want the vote on it again, so we can fill out this portion of the amendment?
If Brian thinks just saying, you know, adopting the budget with the amendment is what we need to do, that's fine. I mean, they did, it's a resolution, they voted on it last time, we just had the hearing on it tonight.
Motion to approve, authorizing the 2020 municipal budget with.
Amendment.
With an amendment, second.
Committee member Hyba.
Yes.
Committee member Senator Brito.
Yes.
Committee woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fiori.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt the municipal budget and approve the 2020 amendment. At this time, we have a consent agenda, which would include resolutions 20-140, 20-150, including bingo wrap applications, but removing resolution 20-142 for a separate vote.
Motion to approve, second.
Committee member Hyba.
Yes.
Committee member Senator Brito.
Yes.
Committee woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fiori.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have resolution 20-142, resolution authorizing fireworks display in the New York Foundation, with the date now determined as July 3rd, 2020.
Still moved, second.
Committee member Hyba.
Yes.
Committee member Senator Brito.
Yes.
Committee woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fiori.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Abstain.
Motion carries to adopt resolution 20-142 with abstention notice.
I'm sorry, recuse.
With recusal notice. At this time, we have township committee comments.
Committee woman Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things tonight. First of all, wanted to thank Colleen and Tony. Maneuvering our way fiscally through uncharted territory makes my household budget look like there's no problem at all. Also, to all the smaller businesses out in town, just know that the Township Committee thinks about you every day, and really can't imagine what your struggles are. I am hoping that dining outside will help some, but it's going to be based on weather, and it's going to be based on whether you have the area to put tables outside. So unfortunately, it's going to help some, but not all, and that's been the way things have been going, helping some, but not all. But I do want to make you aware that we are aware of your struggles, and we think about you every day. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, committee woman Snell. Committee member Senator Brito.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo your comments and committee woman Snell's comments with regard to our CFO, Colleen Lapp, and our administrator, Tony Mercatante, and their teams. To offer up a budget, an amendment to the budget in these very, very trying times, it is difficult at best to imagine all the revenue losses and still able to provide a budget that's balanced for this town. And to the mayor's point and comment, was it not for great fiscal planning by our administration here to put the township in a fantastic position moving forward, understanding that there are unknowns still out there that have yet to be accounted for? I think we're certainly impressed with the results of the budget. So Colleen and Tony and team, thank you so much for your efforts, and you placed us in the Township of Middletown in a great position moving forward, as best as we can expect in these trying times. And secondly, to committee woman Snell's comments with regard to the outside dining, it's a start. We'll, we'll take it, although we would enjoy some indoor dining, but that, yet to be seen as far as county. So we want to move forward with outdoor dining. Please, everyone in Middletown, respect the social distancing, so we can continue to move forward and get it back to normalcy as quickly as possible. Mayor, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee member Hyba.
Thank you, Mayor. Got to echo off the comments that I just heard earlier, they basically covered everything, but I am excited about the dining, and everything seems to be moving forward with opening, not as fast as I would like, but I would like to see things continue to go the direction we're going. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things first regarding the budget. My colleague said it best, remarkable job, and as the mayor also said, by the CFO, the administrator, and all of their teams and department heads in putting together a budget that really could have gone way, way wrong based on the amount of revenue lost. And we introduced a budget that was, you know, based on many years of fiscal and financial planning that this committee and administration had put forth, which laid the groundwork. Unfortunately, lots of revenue losses, and let me tell you, this, and I said in every budget meeting, this could have went really bad really fast, and I think that's going to be an unfortunate reality for a lot of other municipalities that haven't had the fiscal discipline of Middletown, and unfortunately, some of the realities of other taxable entities that may affect Middletown, and I hope that not to be the case, but you just never know. You know, seeing the state borrowing, what is it, like $5 trillion? I think it was $5 billion, I think, or some, some, just a large number, that's undoubtedly going to have an impact on this municipality taxpayers for, I think, my grandchildren's future at this point, but it's not going to be pretty. So I commend, you know, all the efforts made here, putting Middletown again taxpayers first and doing the great things. It also allows us to invest in the community, and one of the things that I have been very staunch on is youth, is our youth, and today, two resolutions passed, one, you know, both regarding youth activities, youth athletics, and I know we do a great job, compliments to our recreation department and our DPW and Public Works for all the work that they do in helping provide better opportunities for our youth, which is extremely important, makes this community that much more, that much more connected. And today, you know, with the passage of, you know, the awards for Normandy Park and Nut Swamp Soccer Lacrosse, call it multi, multipurpose turf, just something that is very well needed. It completes the, what I call, the 10-year cycle of program, capital program for youth athletics, and it's really going to be a great, great value and benefit. And one of the things that I've noticed out there, and to Ted and his team, you know, you look at places like Linkcroft Acres and Fairview Fields, and I know Tony Mercatante, our administrator, is a soccer enthusiast himself, and sees those fields, but those fields were, ah, was that, to say the least? Those fields, as a grass, as grass, were absolutely destroyed last, last spring, going into the spring, last fall, absolutely destroyed, ruts, just complete wear and tear from overuse. And if the one thing this pandemic did by not allowing anybody on them in the work of our DPW is, you see those fields have come back to life there, and actually now, probably some of the most quality grass fields that I have seen anywhere in the state of New Jersey, and now the ability to have our athletes, I've been saying this for 10 years, having them practice on turf so they don't destroy the grass, it's just going to save taxpayer money, it's going to put, you know, better surfaces, and it's just a great thing. So thank you, committee, thank you, administration, for getting that done, and I think now we have some of the best facilities in this entire, not only county, but state. And then finally, this week, I believe you lose track of time, marks the end of the school year, I think. I think marking periods ended on Friday, and just a few observations as a parent, not necessarily as an elected official, but, you know, listen, there was a major curveball thrown in March to this district with regards to the closing of schools, and my hats off to the administration of Middletown's public schools. I have two daughters in the public schools, middle and elementary, and they did a tremendous job, you know, just shifting on the fly to do, I don't know if it's called virtual learning, online learning, whatever it's called, but they, you know, they really were able to meet the challenge, and, you know, my hats off to them, and, you know, a well-deserved break for the teachers and administrators coming up. But with that said, the one thing that I learned as a parent is that there is no, there is no substitute for in-person teach, in-person learning and education. It's vital to our, to our children, it's vital to my children, it's vital to every child in this township, it's vital to our tax bills of 65%, or 65 cents. It's vital to every child in this township. It's vital to our tax bills of 65% or 65 cents on every dollar going to our great school system here. And I implore the governor and Trenton, who unfortunately, you know, have been a little slow in a lot of their decisions to restart and reopen. But come September, they will have six months. I've had six months since the last time a child has been in school. And there is no other way, in my view, but to get kids back to school in some way, shape, or form. It will have a tremendous, tremendous negative consequence if we can't get these kids back. You know, so should we learning and learning from the teachers that are so highly qualified instead of being in front of a screen. So, I really hope that Trenton comes up with a viable plan and we get our children, as we end the school year here in June, we get our children back to school in September because there is no substitute. There is no other way. And it really needs to happen. And I'm not going to go into the statistics of children and COVID or anything. That's just not relevant. But we got to find a way to get kids back in school. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Just a couple things. We do not have a workshop meeting next month. So our next meeting will be July 20, I believe. Yes, okay. So, just that quick housekeeping. One thing that, yeah, I won't go on, I agree with the points that my colleagues made. One thing that I did want to bring to the attention of the members of the public that have joined us tonight, and total hats off to our DPW. Six months ago, we, this Township Committee became the first Township Committee in the state of New Jersey to purchase a Styrofoam recycling machine. That machine, I thought, was going to take at minimum six months to educate the public and understand that they would be able to take their Styrofoam and turn it into what has long been thought of rather than as a pollutant, but into a renewable good. At the six-month mark, we have collected 18 tractor trailers full of Styrofoam. That's not just an environmental win, that's a win for our taxpayers as well. It's a win for the county. And I hope that we can start signing on other municipalities moving forward to do exactly the same thing as Middletown. And that is to remove this pollutant and turn it into the renewable good. 18 tractor trailers filled top to bottom, side to side, have been removed from the landfills of Monmouth County, thanks to the efforts of not people going and dropping it into a can, a special can outside of their house, but going to the train station, going to Cane's Lane, going into other areas throughout the town that we have established these satellite pickups. This is an accomplishment for this town and one that it should be proud of. I cannot believe, I had them double-check because, and I think triple-check, because I did not believe that we had collected 18 tractor trailers, which were then turned into six pallets of 300 pounds worth of densified Styrofoam. That is an incredible thing in my eyes and one that, tip of the hat to DPW, because I see the pictures of Cane's Lane, and boy, the day after, that is completely cleaned up and there is not a speck of Styrofoam. They start processing that when Cane's Lane is closed for those two days. So, really, something that I can't believe happened and I'm incredibly proud of town. And I hope to increase that. I think Ted Maloney is participating virtually here, and I'm not sure he is ready for that. But I'm ready for it, Ted. So, I see your name there. So, Ted, sorry, buddy. We'll find you the help somewhere. But keep processing it. Today marked the first day of outdoor eating. Please, please, please go out and support these folks. On January 6, whenever I was sworn in as mayor, I didn't, obviously, none of us thought we'd be sitting in the position we are today. And I've sat with people who have lost loved ones. I've sat with individuals who are struggling with addiction. I've sat with people who are struggling with disease. I think, and those are all incredibly tough. One thing that I did not think that I would be doing this year is talking with the businesses and hearing the struggles of what they are going through. I sat on the phone with the owner of a restaurant who is incredibly successful. And I'll give William a big shout-out from Nanny's Kitchen. The man is living, living the American dream. An Egyptian man that came to this country now owns two restaurants and had all the success he could possibly have. I think Fiori ate there more than anybody else. Him and his whole family were there like every week. It's like personal chefs. I've sat on the phone with these individuals. I've heard their stories. I've tried to help them with PPE. I've tried to help them find grain opportunities. I've talked on the phone with Stephanie Cartier of No Limits. I've talked to Nanny from the New Monmouth Diner. These people need help. There's no other thing, nothing more I can say, and that these people need help. And I understand why Asbury Park took the steps that they did. Because think of Asbury Park 15 years ago. These restaurants took a chance on that town, and now they are struggling. And they have revitalized that town. Same thing can be said for every restaurant owner, every business owner here in Middletown. They are struggling. They are trying to keep their people employed. They are trying to keep our residents employed. So, please go out and help them. I know it's only 50% of what they're allowed outside. I know sometimes the locations of them aren't the most beautiful in the world. You're not sitting on the edge in Niagara Falls. You may be sitting on the edge of Route 35, Route 36. But guess what? I'll still go get a BLT from Nanny any day of the week. I'll go and get that unbelievable carrot cake from William any day of the week. So, please, please, please go out and support these local businesses. We've done everything we can in terms of encouraging folks to go out and get takeout and delivery, and they've done an incredible job. But now it's time to go and see them back face-to-face again. So, please go support those small businesses. With that, I will open it up for public comment. Jeez, I'm trying to think of the ground rules. Ask that you please state your name and address for the record. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes. When Heidi unmutes your line, you will hear two beeps, and she will ask you if you'd like to make a public comment. If you would, that is your opportunity. Again, once you hear the two beeps and Heidi says, if you'd like to ask if you'd like to make a public comment, that is your opportunity to do so. Thank you. Heidi?
Would you like to make a comment? Would you like to make a comment?
No, thank you.
Would you like to make a comment? Would you like to make a comment?
Hello?
Yes?
Yes. Yes. Hi, my name's Jim McGinty. I live in River Plaza on the corner of Meadowway and Dow Avenue. And we've been having kids from all over the county coming here, carloads of kids. They're bringing beer and junk down here in the woods across the street from my house. They're parking in front of my house and my neighbor's house. And they're trashing the woods down there. And it's not really a park. It's just kind of a, it was kind of a, just the woods for years and years. But now, the word got out, but kids been going down there before, but they're really trashing the woods. And they're, you know, you can hear them, sometimes they let the F-bomb fly when they get out of their cars. And I saw, you know, somebody with a case of Corona going down there. And they're certainly not taking the stuff back into their cars. So, I know there was an officer, Mike, I spoke to yesterday. I don't know his last name. There's an officer here today patrolling the place. They're doing a great job. And we just have a problem in the neighborhood with a lot of people, a lot of kids coming in from out of town. I think they take the train and from, you know, get off at Red Bank and walk down. It's between the old Chris's and Half Mile Road. There's an old woods down there. So, I'd just like to, you know, thank the two officers for their work. And hopefully, you can keep an eye on that. Thank you.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you for your comments. Could you just repeat your first and last name for me?
James McGinty, M-C-G-I-N-T-Y.
And your address, sir?
Number 10 Meadowway. It's a Red Bank mailing address, but it's in River Plaza.
Sure. Yeah, we will, Tony is, Tony Mercantate, our...
Dutchneck Park.
Yeah, okay. So, we'll continue to monitor that for you, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. McGinty. You have a good day, okay?
You too.
Thanks.
Would you like to make a comment?
Hello?
Yes.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Okay, are you there?
Yes. You can go ahead. Can you state your name and address?
Yes, Carolyn Carriello. I'm at 41 Dow Ave. Just really want to also talk about what James just talked about with the problem down in Dutchneck with, today there were probably at least 100 kids down there, ranging in age from 13 to 21. They're smoking dope. They're drinking beer. They're making fires. The litter is unbelievable. Sometimes the fires are still lit when they leave in the evenings, and they're still smoldering in the morning when I go down there at 8:00. It's called Dutchneck Park. It's kind of an unofficial entrance to it. There is no parking lot for it here at the corner of Dow Ave and Meadowway. And so, the kids are parking on our street. They're racing by. They're playing loud music. They're leaving an unbelievable amount of garbage on the street. And they're coming from all over. They're coming from New Egypt and Long Branch and just all over the place. They come by train. Yeah, Perth Amboy. They come by train and they come here. We've had four bikes stolen yesterday. We've had a surfboard stolen last week. We've had tires punctured, bike tires, car tires slashed. And I've spoken to a few of the police officers, and I've offered to take them back to the campsite where these kids are, they also swing off of a rope swing and jump into the river. And spoken to several of the police officers who have come by to respond to calls of concern. And I've offered to take them down in there to show them the site. And today was the first day. An officer, Kevin, something like Molland or something like that, I'm not sure of his last name, but very nice. He took me up on the offer and he went down in there. And it seems like he's been here for a few hours now, talking to the kids as they try to enter the park and tell them that he's not going to be permitting the littering or the smoking dope, drinking beer. And we just want to say that we appreciate that effort because it's really, we're just really concerned that it's just a matter of time before these kids that have been stealing things from the street are going to be stealing things from our house or our backyards.
Yeah, absolutely. And I appreciate your comments. I'm going to follow up with our police chief, Craig Weber. After this meeting is over, our Administrator, Tony Mercantate, and I will have a discussion with our police chief. And we will certainly continue to monitor that area. And I'm going to ask Tony to go down there tomorrow and just take a look. And, you know, between the administration and the police department, we will continue to keep a close eye on that, you know, over the next few, you know, weeks to ensure that obviously these kids are acting appropriately and not doing things that they shouldn't be doing, especially any type of damage to property. Because, you know, you're absolutely right. We don't want it to lead to any type of vandalism or break-ins of properties in the area.
Okay, thank you. And also, they've been cutting down some of the trees down there and letting them fall down into the swimming river down there. So, I think it would really help, Kevin said that he, Officer Kevin said that he would be willing to go back in there and show a presence so that these kids know that they're serious about it. And if they're caught littering, they're going to be fined. And if they're caught smoking, they're going to be arrested. And I think what we really need is a presence because for decades, kids have been going back in there to smoke and drink because they don't think that the Middletown Police are going to go in there and see them.
Sure. Well, and if they want to cut down any trees, I have a couple in my yard that could use some.
Yeah.
If there's any you want to identify and have them cut down, so that's perfectly fine. But in the park, that's obviously not allowed. And like I said, we'll continue to monitor that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. You have a good night, okay?
Thank you, too.
Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Diane, and my husband, Richard Watkins. We live at 37 Dow Avenue. And not to beat a dead horse, but we all met about this today because it was a particularly busy weekend, and today was pretty bad. And up until today, my complaints would have been just the nuisance being caused on Dow Avenue by the lines of up to 14 cars parked on a one-block street around the corner to Meadow. I've seen cars zooming past, neighbors walking dogs, runners, kids on bikes, cars full of as many as nine kids can unload at a time. And there may be several shifts on a warm day coming and going. There's litter noise, strangers on a lovely quiet street, somebody vomited on Jim's lawn. I don't know if he knows that today, this afternoon.
He didn't say that, no.
What was once a very local swimming hole and nature hike has changed dramatically. Due to social media, I have to tell you, the tone of our block has changed, you know, during the day. We took a walk down today, a neighbor and I, and on the trail, again, she's already said this, beer cans, discarded clothes, tackle shoes, bottles, loads of broken glass, logs blown from past fires. There was a five-foot log burning in the middle of maybe 15 kids. I counted 75 kids down there. What else? There were a few trees that they had chopped. Kids were mostly hanging out and smoking, and the smoke pot, the smell was very thick. And some of them were in other areas. What was, you know, once natural growth is stamped down and covered with glass, we took a lot of pictures. Let's see, I want to also say that we asked where they were from, and they told us they were from, put the train from Long Branch with their bikes. And it's called Dow Avenue in their mind. So, this is all done on social media. Ocean, Red Bank, Grumson, New Egypt, Perth Amboy. That's just a few kids we talked to. I asked one guy how old he was. He was 21. There's kids there, 14, 12, young kids. They're not all bad kids, believe me. I empathize with it. It's a beautiful scene, but it's out of control because of social media. It's brought in everybody. And if a homeowner such as myself were facilitating these activities on my own property, we would be subject to arrest and prosecution. The municipality needs to regulate and enforce the ordinance regarding this public system so that, you know, you're not the facilitator. So, who will be responsible when someone overdoses, is seriously hurt, or assaulted? You know, where does the liability lie? I'm a pediatric nurse. I'm worried about it. Even the swing, the swing looks like a spinal cord damage to me. And it's going into a river that's pretty, some of it's polluted. I shouldn't say that. It's a gorgeous area. And I want to thank you very much for listening to me and all of my neighbors. That's all.
Thank you very much, Diane. And as I said, I would definitely appreciate you and your husband's comments, as well as all the neighbors on that block. And that'll definitely be a priority. I think Tony has already sent a message, Tony Mercantate has already sent a message to the chief to follow up on that. So, we'll be monitoring that over the course of the next few weeks, especially as summer, now the official start of summer is upon us, and kids are no longer having to do any type of schoolwork or anything like that. So, we'll definitely be on that. Thank you.
Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I would.
Go ahead.
Oh, is it my turn now? Hi, this is Don Watson, living at 1 Collinson Drive. I don't hear any beeps at my house, so I'm answering, responding to Heidi every time she asks if I would like to make a comment. I would like to ask... I would like to ask a question about the budget, and maybe Colleen is still there, I can... Okay, I see we increased the... Is that okay? There she is. Yeah, we increased the surplus here in this amendment for the budget, okay? And I see we also increased the amount to be collected from the taxpayers by almost the same amount. Is there any reason for that?
Yes, as I explained, if you look at all the other adjustments for the revenues, there were great reductions...
Yes.
From what we're anticipating being able to collect this year due to the pandemic. So, we had to both increase some revenues through surplus and amount to be raised, and we all reduced appropriations to help offset those losses.
So, we increased the surplus?
No, you're increasing the amount coming from surplus to offset...
Right, that's a revenue in the budget.
Oh, the way I read it, you're increasing the surplus.
It's part of the budget, if you look where it says surplus anticipated, right above it, it says revenues.
Correct.
That's the revenue that's used in the budget from the surplus that we have on hand.
Okay, I just thought you were increasing the surplus account.
I wish I had that ability.
Yeah, right? Okay, I just wanted to clear that up a little bit, because, you know, like, thank you very much. These people that are hanging out in River Plaza now, is that a real park that they're hanging out in?
Yes.
Okay, because I wasn't real clear on that either. And about a month ago, I asked about the phone number that people call to connect with this meeting, whether it was a toll number or not, has anybody looked into that yet?
I'm going to have Joe Fagler, I'm the director of our IT, speak to that, okay, Don?
Sure.
Yes, we did look into that, and unfortunately, we don't offer a toll-free number.
And I don't understand a word he's saying.
It's all lumber.
I'm sorry, I did look into that, can you have me okay?
I hear you, but it's very hard to understand, you got to get near a microphone.
Hang on a second, Don.
Sure, I'm here for you.
How about now, is that okay?
Much better.
Okay, so, I did look into that, that is a toll number, that is on the account. They do offer a toll-free number offering, so I am in communication with my account rep with Cisco, so we're going to find out and see what the cost is for that as well.
Okay, so if people want to connect to our meetings here by telephone, they have to pay for it.
People still pay by the minute? I'm just curious.
It depends on what service you're going to use, so...
But it's a toll number, so they're paying by something, by a call, by a minute?
In eighty-two.
Nineteen, in this day of age, you're probably charging it by the second.
I would never, to be honest, have seen a toll charge on a phone bill. I guess, I guess maybe.
If you have a copper line, then it looks like you are.
If you're calling from a cellphone, you're not. Okay. So, if you're calling from a landline...
A plaino telephone line, a bus line.
Joe, you're gonna...
A plaino telephone line?
Okay. That's what it... I just remembered a long cord that would go down to the floor in your kitchen, you know.
Funny, I still got one of those.
Sorry, Don, go ahead.
What are you sorry for?
No, I just, I didn't know you still had one with the cord that ran down to the floor in the kitchen in your house.
Well, you got to be able to walk around while you're talking on a phone.
You got it.
You can't stand on one spot and cook dinner, you got to move to the fridge, to the counter.
You got to be able to maybe sit on the stove top while you're on the phone, right?
Multitasking, they call that now, right?
That's right.
Okay. That's about all I can think of right now, thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks, Don, bye, Don.
Would you like to make a comment? Would you like to make a comment?
No, thank you. Thanks again, Frank. Those lights on.
Would you like to make a comment?
We are the most vulnerable, we have been hit the hardest.
It hasn't been covered, from what everybody said.
Would you like to make a comment?
A little September there, too.
Would you like to make a comment?
The people that we got this number from, they have done these projects before.
Would you like to make a comment? Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. I don't know how I follow up, Don, but my name is Mike Borelli, I live at 49 Dow Avenue, just to piggyback off what neighbors have said here, I'm right on the corner, so...
The only way you could top it is if you told us that you were calling from the phone with a long cord in your kitchen.
I haven't had one of those in a very long time, if ever. So, I live right, yeah, I live right next to the park there, right on the corner, and the police have been fantastic. Kevin, as my neighbor Carolyn said today, was out there, but it's really been a massive influx of teenagers, the middle school to recent high school grads, and it's been happening for four to five weeks. So, this started right before Memorial Day, when it got, when the weather got nice, they started on the rope swing, it went viral on Snapchat, and apparently that's where all the kids are seeing it. But we're seeing twenty to twenty-five cars a day, starting at ten AM to eight PM at night, so it's, and then some later after hours that we've been calling the police to come handle. A lot of kids on bikes, parents are dropping their kids off, it's, we've been here for five years and occasionally see a couple cars in the weekend, but it's crazy right now. So, just to say it again, underage drinking, smoking, this speeding, I have a four-year-old and a two-year-old, and the kids whip around the corners like maniacs, trash everywhere, they trespass down my driveway because they think it's the path, the fires, the noise in the streets, when you're trying to put the kids to bed, they're loitering outside, traffic issues, like UPS truck can't get down the street, they have to turn around, and we see the stolen bikes, the surfboards, the slashed tires. Someone today came out of the woods and threatened me on my front lawn, so that's why I called the cops again today. So, it's like, it's been crazy. And we know that Schultz Drive, there's an entrance to Dutchneck Park, but apparently the path is overgrown or doesn't connect to where the kids go down on the rope swing, so they have to park near our houses. So, I don't know what the solution is, if it's a sign that says this isn't an entrance, obviously, more of a police presence, but just to reiterate, it's gotten out of hand.
There's a parking lot right by the Jerry Adams Building.
Really?
On Schultz, there's a small parking lot that says Dutchneck Park, and that's ours, that's where you're supposed to park, but it's a very rough terrain, so it's not an easy walk.
I was going to say, it doesn't seem... So...
It's not easy for my corner either. Yeah, it's difficult for my corner, too, to get down there, I mean, you have to cross a stream, you're up and down a hill, I mean, it's not easy, and I would imagine the train on the other side isn't either, even if they cut the brush back, but, I mean, I feel like that's, they shouldn't be parking here, it's not a true park entrance, even though it's a park.
Yeah, Mike, thank you, and believe me, you're not beating a dead horse, every complaint and every concern, especially with a four and a two-year-old, you know, and all the things that are happening, you know, are totally unacceptable. And that's why our police department is going to have, it's going to have a presence tomorrow and over the next few days, both, you know, obviously, not totally visible and visible at the same time, so that we can monitor what's happening over there. Because, just because it's nine o'clock in the morning doesn't mean that something bad can happen. So, so let me, let me just work with the chief and with Tony Mercantate on that, and get you that enforcement that's obviously needed.
I really appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. That's all. All right, everybody, seeing no other members of the public, I move to closed public portion and adjourn.
Can I run my mouth?
Yes.
Can I send a greeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Have a good night, everybody, thank you, we'll see you in July.